Good evening and welcome to the July 16th, 2013 San Bruno City Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Biassoti.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall. Absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Samut.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra, would you lead us in the judge of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, approval of minutes for June 13th, 2013.
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
I move that we approve the minutes of June 13th, 2013.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Communications.
There are no additional communications this evening.
Thank you. And for the record, Kevin asked me to make note that he was here early tonight. Public comment. Is there anyone? Is there anyone here in the public who would like to make a comment on an item that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. Conflict of interest. Is there any this evening?
There is an item on 5A, 173 San Benito. I need to recuse myself. I am within 500 feet of the property.
Yes, and I need to recuse myself as well for the same reason. Anyone else? Okay. Public hearings. 5A, 173 San Benito Avenue. Perry, would you take over, please?
Thank you and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to construct a new, single-family dwelling. The site itself is located on the northwest corner of San Anselmo and San Benito Avenue. I would like to point out that the applicant has applied for a lot line adjustment application in the interest of creating two developable parcels. If you turn to Exhibit E within your staff report, you'll notice that there's two new lots that will be created through this lot line adjustment application. The new Lot 3 is the interior lot and has 5,012 square feet of total area and will front directly onto San Anselmo Avenue. Newly created corner lot, which is identified as New Lot Number 2, consists of 6,329 square feet of overall area and is located directly and has frontage on San Anselmo Avenue and San Benito Avenue. The proposal before us tonight is to construct a new, single-family dwelling on the newly-created interior lot that fronts directly onto San Anselmo Avenue. The lot line adjustment application can be approved at staff level and does not require Planning Commission approval. As stated, the applicant is proposing to construct a new, two-story, single-family dwelling. The first floor will contain a living room, family room, office, kitchen, and one bathroom. The second floor will contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Combined, the home will mount to 2,329 square feet of living area with an attached two-car garage. The project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee at their June meeting. The Architectural Review Committee forwarded the project onto the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation with some very minor staff recommendations. Those recommendations including continuing the brick base along the left side elevation, modifying the interior garage space to have a minimum interior dimension of 20 feet wide by 20 feet deep, and to incorporate windows along the top portion of the garage door. The applicant has addressed all of staff's recommendations and updated the plans accordingly. I would like to point out that the proposal before us tonight is meeting all of the development standards. Specifically, they are meeting the FAR requirement, or threshold, lot coverage threshold setbacks, and height requirement. Staff does find that the proposal complies with the residential design guidelines. They are incorporating setbacks, the second floor setback from the first story below. Additionally, the second floor is meeting all of the daylight plain options identified within the residential design guidelines. I'd also like to point out that there is consistent window type and trim around all four elevations. The applicant has also incorporated a number of design features to help kind of de-emphasize the garage. Most notably, they are using a split garage door design. Additionally, there is a trellis feature located just above the garage. And staff also finds that the proposed large porch, which measures six feet deep by approximately 20.5 feet wide, will help de-emphasize the garage even more. Staff did send the required 300-foot public notification and a courtesy notice to all property owners. We received one comment from a neighbor regarding the appearance of the lot. That property owner was specifically concerned with the weeds on site and the lack of perimeter fencing. Since that time, the applicant has reduced or eliminated the weeds on site, and the applicant plans on securing the site with perimeter fencing once the existing, single-family home is demolished on the corner of San Anselmo and San Benito Avenue. Overall, staff supports the project, and we do find that the new home is consistent with the design and scale of the neighborhood and complies with all aspects of the residential design guidelines. Staff would like to add one condition of approval, and that is requiring that the lot line adjustment application be approved and recorded prior to building permit issuance. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project based on findings of fact 1 through 7 and conditions of approval 1 through 27 with the added condition regarding the lot line adjustment. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any commission questions for staff?
Yes, through the chair. Matt, I just want to confirm that the address that is being used for this project, 173 San Benito, that is for the corner house. When this unit gets built, it will have a San Anselmo address?
Correct. The address will be changed and it will have a San Anselmo address number.
Any other questions for staff?
Just, yeah, real quickly, through the chair. Just so I'm totally and completely sure on this. The only reason it's before us is because it's basically building a home, there's nothing there. Is that correct?
It's technically, it's constructing a new home. Technically, there was detached accessory structures located on that newly-created interior lot, so this is considered a 50% expansion, which requires review of the Architectural Review Committee and approval from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll thank staff for the report and open the public hearing. If the applicant is present or the representative, please come to the podium and give your name and make any comments you wish.
Good evening. My name is Costas Kakkounikakis, and I am the property owner, as well as Mr. Spears Kakkounikakis, sitting there. We are, just as Matt says, we are trying to build a new, single-family residence, two stories, on the bordering the park, the Lumina Park on San Anselmo. It is, we worked very hard with Matt to plan this out architecturally, to look good, and to fit with the neighborhood. That was something that we were, you know, very worried about because we didn't want to change the neighborhood. We are planning also to build a duplex on the corner lot as soon as we're finished developing the plans for that. And the duplex as well will have similar features as the single-family residence to make sure that the neighborhood stays within the planning, within the...
Design guidelines?
The design guidelines, yes. As far as the landscaping goes, we are, you know, planning to, we have planned to go with the landscaping that the city has recommended, California local native plants, drought resistant. Besides that, we're working very hard with the city to make sure that this project looks good and meets your requirements.
Thank you very much. Are there any commission questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
If you'd look at sheet A3. That's the elevations. Now, staff may be aware that the applicant that's after this one, 5B, I have a similar issue with this one, which is the roof lines. You have two roof lines. If I look at the front elevation?
Yes.
The one on the top left. That looks like two houses to me. It's not an integrated building. Architecturally, I don't agree with the roof, the two roofs that you have, and I personally will not approve this project if this roof line exists.
Okay. As per City of San Bruno building guidelines, we were told that we would have setbacks from the first and second floor. Also, we were constrained with the square footage, so this, we felt, was the best way to work with both.
The roof lines, the two distinct roofs make it look like two units. It doesn't look like one entity. This is a loophole in the design guidelines, in my opinion. You may comply with it, but I personally don't agree with the architectural aesthetics of this frontage.
Okay. We will take that into consideration. I don't know if you, any of you have any, any other commissioners have any problems with this?
Any other commission comments or questions?
I guess through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
Commissioner Mishra, just so that I'm clear as to what, are you looking at like the front elevation, rear elevation, and then the left and the right elevations? Do those two differ?
These two are the top and the bottom elevations, the front and the rear ones I have a problem with, where this, the left side and the right side look like two distinct buildings to me. And they're not, it doesn't look like a single-family unit. It looks like the duplex to me. Architecturally, I don't, I don't think this works. Not talking about square footage, I'm not talking about design guidelines, I'm just talking about just the way the roof interacts with the second floor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments on this, from the public on this item? Okay. Seeing no further comment on it, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Or a motion if there's no discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
So I don't hear any discussion going on. I'll make the motion that we approve. Where is it? Sorry. And along with the, based on the findings of fact 1 through 7, conditions of approval 1 through 28. Was that correct, you added one?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. May I hear what the number 28 is?
It was the one that staff mentioned in the board.
Okay. Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
Before you call the question, motion to question, I'd like to add another condition of approval, number 29, that the front elevation be revised to provide a first and second story... let me formulate this properly. I would like the front elevation, left roof, to be revised such that it's integrated with the second floor roof lines. And I would let the discretion be at the community development director to see that that happens.
Okay, is that your comments or?
Yeah.
Does the motion maker wish to alter his motion?
No.
Okay. Personally, as a commissioner, having seen a few applications, I understand Commissioner Mishra's concern, and I would recommend to the applicant that he consider, if this passes, that he consider integrating the roof line a little bit better because I think it would improve the property value. But I don't, I don't see, I don't feel, personally, I don't feel it's a requirement that I'd want to put on the approval. Any other comments on this before calling for the question? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
One.
Okay, motion passes three to one. There's a 10-day appeal period. Let's see, is the, is the chair going to recuse himself for the next item? Please invite him to return.
Thank you, Perry, and thank you, Mary, for the lovely conversation. Item B, 792790 Cottonwood Drive. This is request for a use permit to allow an addition which increases the gross floor area ratio of an existing home by greater than 50% per sections 12230B1 and 12240B3 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Laura?
Thank you and good evening. The subject site is on Cottonwood Drive at Greenwood Way. It's a 5,000-square-foot lot with an existing house of 1,584 square feet of living area. They also have a partially-covered carport that was built with a building permit, actually soon after the original house was constructed. There is no garage on site currently. The applicant is proposing, in addition to the right side of the existing home, it would remain as a one-story house. The addition would include 478 square feet of living area and a 409-square-foot two-car garage. It would be a slightly substandard two-car garage, which I'll discuss a little bit more in just a minute. The total floor area is proposed 2,000, oh, I'm sorry, 2,471, which represents a floor area ratio of .49, which is beneath the floor area ratio guideline. The lot coverage is proposed to be 49%, which does require a discretionary entitlement. So the use permit tonight is for a 50% expansion in the floor area, as well as exceeding the lot coverage threshold. The house is intended to be used as a small residential care facility and needs to be wheelchair-accessible for that use. Therefore, the house is proposed to remain as a one-story, and there are several ramps that are required for access to the house, both in the front and on sides and on the rear of the property. The project has been reviewed twice by the Architectural Review Committee. In February of this year, the primary recommendations from the Architectural Review Committee were to include a two-car garage, and the committee felt strongly, the applicant had originally proposed kind of a large one-car garage, and the committee preferred to see a slightly substandard two-car garage. So that's what's reflected in your plans here tonight. The Architectural Review Committee also discussed some changes to the roof line. They also recommended that the applicant minimize the ramping as much as possible and still be able to provide the required access. The project was redesigned and those recommendations were implemented, and the Architectural Review Committee heard it again at the May meeting. The same commissioners were present for the second review. There was considerable discussion at that time about the roof line of the house, and there was discussion about what the options were, what the patterns were within the neighborhood, the goals that the applicant had for the project, and quite a few different options were discussed at that time. So the applicant has come back with a design that meets the intention of that discussion there at the Architectural Review Committee meeting. The applicant has also incorporated several other small recommendations and kind of clarifications on the plan that were recommended at that, at that meeting as well. Staff sent a courtesy notice to the neighbors before the first Architectural Review Committee meeting. We did not receive any comments, and of course, we also sent the required legal notice before the public hearing tonight. So we have not received any comments through the entire process for this project. In regards to the design, staff does find that the project conforms with the residential design guidelines. They proposed a stucco finish throughout the house, including changing the small portion on the front, which is currently shingle, to be stucco, and consistent windows and trim and other features around the entire house. Additionally, the applicant has developed a landscaping plan with the intention to help mask the ramp that's located at the front of the house, so they've given some thought and consideration into the kind of plants that would grow with that location and be drought-resistant, native types of species, as well as grow to a size that it would reduce the visibility of the ramp that's at the front of the house. That landscaping plan is attached to your staff report as an exhibit. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the project. There is one condition that's a little bit outside of the ordinary, and that is because they have a public utility easement that is in the rear of their property. They have requested permission in this case because they need a concrete type of a permanent type of ramping structure and patio in order to meet the kinds, the needs of the residents that will be living there. So they've requested permission to have that ramp and patio within the public utility easement area. They have received permission from PG&E, who is one of the easement holders, to do that, and so there are two conditions of approval included in your staff report that address the proper procedure for having that patio and ramp within that easement area. The other conditions are pretty generally standard for a single-family addition. So staff would recommend approval of the project based on findings 1 through 7 and subject to the conditions of approval 1 to 27 in the staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Kevin.
I do believe that, I think this looks so familiar to me because I believe I sat on this at one point, but I'm not sure, I just make sure I did because I'm just looking who was present. You know, it's not a big deal, but it's just reminding me that I think I was present on either the second park review, it must have been.
Yeah, I'm sorry if that's reflected wrong in the staff report.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I'm thinking of the same, the same project, to keep my head straight in the game. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Would you like to speak on your project? If you'd give us your name, please, and tell us a little about your project.
Yeah, my name is Roger Fuji. I'm the owner of the cottonwood property that you see in front of you, and Laura mentioned the intention is to make this a residential care facility, and it's going to be licensed for non-ambulatory patients, and that's partially the reason why we needed to add an extra square footage for the wheelchairs, as well as ramping around the sides. And we've worked extensively with Laura, with my architect van, and getting the landscaping and working with PG&E to get that utility encroachment approved as well. So, and taking all your considerations, we try to put everything together and hopefully the plan works out for you guys. So that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Please.
I just wanted to check with you.
Sure.
See that you have a license, it'll be licensed for six patients.
It, it's going to be a licensed facility for six or under. It just depends on the type of clientele we're going to be receiving. If they have high nursing needs, then it may only be licensed for four, but it will always, it will definitely be for six and under. Our anticipation is six.
What keeps you from going for the eight capacity? Is it a square footage?
Uh, yeah, I think once you go beyond six, then it becomes a different, you can't have it in a residential, like, home, I believe. I mean, I'm not sure, but the regional center that we're working with only provides services for this type of home, for six or under.
So you're licensed from Department of Social Services, Community Care License?
It will be, if we do one of the homes, it'll be licensed under Community Care Services. However, there's also an option that we can be licensed under Department of Health Care Services for six. It all depends on where we are in the stage of the building process. There's two different projects that are trying to offer me right now, so.
Do you have the ability or space capacity for eight? Typically, eight is your...
No, I don't think we would be able to provide services for eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for a conversation, discussion, and/or vote.
Through the chair. Some discussion points. You know, we've looked at many of these over the years, and one of the things is that I'm not surprised that we don't have public, public here or having letters, simply because it doesn't, these facilities do not generate traffic, huge traffic, and at one point, there was such a concern and worry about the impact to the community, and I think that I'm starting to realize that this is an addition and to a community rather than a, an obstacle. And I basically want to add those comments and I do support the project.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If there are no, no other comments, I'd be happy with the motion.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. This is the moment for public comment, I missed that, so if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that and go ahead with the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Mishra.
I move that the Planning Commission approve use permit 13-001 based on findings of facts 1 through 7 and conditions of approval 1 through 27.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's approved. There's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Kevin.
I'd just like to commend the applicant as doing, you know, a real good job. He followed what, you know, staff had recommended, and it's going to be a nice project, so thank you for doing all your hard work.
[laughing].
Through the chair.
I don't have to be there yet.
I thought I heard the applicant ask, what does that mean, 10-day appeal process? Do you want to explain?
Dave, would you mind?
I'd be glad to. Through the chair, what that means is that if you have a concern or if somebody else has a concern regarding the action of the Planning Commission, they can file an appeal through our city, and that appeal would be then taken to the city council, and that written appeal would need to be received within 10 days.
And then that you can't, there's no action that can be taken until after 10 days on your end?
Yeah, and I'd just like to echo Commissioner Chase's comments. I really liked what you guys did with the design. The roof line turned out very nicely. The ramps are going to look very good, so good luck to you and congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys did a great job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that brings us to city staff discussion.
The next item is the city staff discussion, and we're looking to the commission to select three of your members for the August 15th Architectural Review Committee meeting.
I'm in, and I'll apologize for missing the last one.
Okay.
Over here.
And Commissioner Johnson, correct? And Commissioner Chase. Great, thank you.
And Planning Commission discussion. Anyone have anything for us tonight?
I'd kind of like to add a few comments.
Please.
Recently, we adopted, the city adopted its budget, and with the budget adoption, there were a couple of modifications within our staff, our community development department staff, and those have to do, one with Laura Russell, our associate planner. Laura was promoted to senior planner, and with that promotion, a well-deserved promotion, Laura will be working more directly in terms of managing the current planning applications, so working even more closely with our staff, not just internally within our department, but within other departments, kind of interacting with other departments to better assure that our applications go through smoothly, and then also coordinating and representing our department regionally with, with other regional groups. So, congratulations to Laura on that promotion and reclassification. It's well-deserved. The other modification or change has to do with Mark Sullivan. Mark Sullivan's position was Housing and Redevelopment Manager, and as you know, in 2012, redevelopment agencies were dissolved here in the state of California, yet as you all know, the need really has continued in terms of trying to provide affordable housing with our, within our communities and dealing with the need to redevelop blighted properties, et cetera. So, many of Mark's functions continue. So many of Mark's functions continue. There's a real need to continue to provide affordable housing, work with a number of properties in our community for redevelopment. So Mark's new title is Long Range Planning Manager, so Mark will continue to work with the update to our housing element on a regular basis. He'll continue to work with redevelopment projects within our community and, and take a position, a continued position really, in terms of the implementation of the Transit Quarters Plan, and then assist our department, Community Development, and our broader staff with technology updates. So those are a couple of, of changes within our department that I wanted to make sure that you were aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Laura. Okay. Is there anyone else?
I did have one question. I was driving by the firehouse again today, and I noticed the landscaping, and it reminded me to ask, had this, have we mentioned it to city council yet, doing the water-tolerant landscaping in front of the library in city hall?
We, we have discussed it in terms of priorities, the priority discussions, with the city council at priority discussion meetings. So the topic has been discussed, a specific project, we haven't gone into any detail.
Very good. Thank you.
On a separate, I just want to get you before you...
Please. No, no, please.
For many years now, there's been a remediation project going on on El Camino Real, near Santa Lucia, actually a little bit this way. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am. I've observed it. I don't know the history of it.
Did you observe anything in particular about it?
What I observed was that the remediation facilities are above ground and, you know, scattered throughout the entire property, and it's, it's very unusual. I've not seen anything quite like it before.
Well, the people I know that observed, have observed it reported that it looked like it was a trash heap. It was very unkempt, and so I'd like to ask if the priority committee could investigate looking at it sometime.
We can definitely do that. Sure.
In particular, since it's been there for many, many, many years, I even asked the question, is it even operating?
We'll check into that.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? Going, going, going. We're our turn.
Congratulations.